2023, it is 9:00 AM and we are in the community wing of City Hall. If I could ask you all to please stand and join me in our pledge of allegiance. Following the pledge, you are welcome to remain standing. (inaudible) Or (inaudible). (inaudible) 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 If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Mayor Althan.
Present.
Vice Mayor Danko.
Present.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Pontieri.
Present.
And Councilmember Hyder is absent.
Thank you. In order for city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, please fill out a comment card with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table near the agendas or available from the Communications Marketing Director seated in the rear of the room. Anyone wishing to speak may approach the podium, provide their name, and may speak for up to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the mayor, be concise and to the point, avoid delaying or interrupting the proceedings, and do not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments. Any person who becomes disorderly may be barred from making any additional comments and may be removed. So with that, I would open up the podium for public comment this morning. Are there any members of the public that would like to address City Council at this time? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Gene Dowd, Palm Coast resident. I'd like to thank the city employees as always. I filled out two of these about a month ago and I got an answer. Didn't like the answer, but got the answer, and I thank the follow-up from the city. I'd also like to thank all men and women currently serving the armed forces, all first responders, law enforcement, fire, EMTs, hospital, and all support staff. And especially, I'd like to thank the city employees. And I'd like to single out, I don't know how they do it, they keep trying to fix the signal in sync over by Palm Coast Parkway and Bel Air, and everyone does an amazing job. Thank you. So Mayor, over the last couple, actually a couple weeks ago, and this time last year, there was a discussion by the former vice mayor and the current vice mayor with the Southern Group, I think they're called. The Southern Group is our lobbying that the taxpayers pay for, and they discuss homeowner's insurance. Previous vice mayor got a letter that his homeowner's insurance was canceled. The current vice mayor talked about the increase that he saw, and it sparked me to think about homeowner's insurance for myself, and I'll speak for myself. My wife and I, in 2019, we paid $1,590. In 2020, we paid $1,600. Didn't complain about a $10 increase, of course. But then in 2021, we saw a $275 increase. 2022, we saw a $250 increase. And in 2023, we saw a $900 increase. But that wasn't enough. We got a second letter from the insurance company because our house is so old that if we wanted to insure it under the new building codes, not the old, we'd have to pay an additional $300. So in total, our insurance has gone up $1,700. And I know you, men and women, don't control that, but you do have access to the lobbying group, you do have access to higher elected officials, and when is enough enough? I'm paying more than double, my wife and I, for our house. And the other thing that came out recently, thank you again, is about homeowner's insurance with roofs replacement. I replaced our, we replaced our, I gotta keep remembering that. We replaced our roof down in 2017, and I'm used to having a roof maybe once every 25 years. My neighbor across the street, so in fact, showed me a letter. His roof was 17 years old, and he said if you wanted it to get reinsured, replace the roof. When does it stop? It has, it has to know. This is killing the average senior. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the public want to make public comment at this time? Yes, sir.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. ITT designed a lot of the roadway around here, and one of the things that they did design was the intersection of Palm Coast Parkway and Palm Harbor Parkway to be used for the exchange of traffic between the two parkways. But a lot of the residential areas are beginning to experience that this is not being the real fact. Florida Park Drive can have more than 7,500 to 9,000 cars per day, which is either 2.8 to 3.1 million cars per year. That's a lot of traffic noise, traffic fumes, traffic dust that affect us. Just food for thought. If something was being added to the water that would sort of poison this, poison the children of the area, that it would harm their health later in life, should we interfere? Why would we treat the air they breathe any different? So, says the breath to breathe is to live, but what if the air you breathe isn't clean? What if the air is contaminated with toxic poisonous traffic fumes and dust? What would you do? A new study came out, ambient air pollution and type 2 diabetes. In summary, current urban air quality in the U.S. may not be safe enough for children who are individual, who are vulnerable to cardio metabolic diseases later in life. Not while they're young, but later in life when they get older. How's that? Particles can enter their lungs and then enlarge into some of their organs, which later in life will cause some harm. So I asked, what can people of Florida Park Drive expect as far as the reduction of traffic fumes, dust, and noise? What does a child's health really worth? Is it really worth protecting the air they breathe to give them a good quality of life so that they don't have to suffer later on in life? Should the elderly's health also be protected? Well, these are things that the city need to answer, and I don't know how to get them to answer. I've been furnishing information for quite a while about the homeowner's insurance. Please do something to help the residents of Florida Park Drive. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public like to address City Council at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public comment section of the meeting. City Manager, any comments regarding public comment today?
No, thank you, Mayor, and appreciate the comments about staff getting back the responses in a timely manner, too.
Very good. And I'll also make a comment. City Council has been approached on the homeowner's insurance problem and has addressed the same issue with our Senate and House leaders, and will stay current with what they are doing over this session and the next session. It's truly an incredible, difficult problem at this time, so we will follow up with you as our legislators make progress to that end. Anyone else?
Sir.
Very good. All right, then I will close out the public participation and move right to Agenda Item E, which is presentations. So our first presentation will be a year-to-date budget overview. Ms. Alves, I'll give a presentation.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Helena Alves, your Finance Director. I have Gwen Regsdahl here with me, our Budget and Procurement Manager, and we're going to get started on your year-to-date operating budget to actual through March 31, 2023. Gwen, we'll get us started.
Ms. Alves, just for information for the public that may be listening in, our fiscal year begins and ends when?
October 1 and ends in September 3.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. We will not go over the timeline in detail today, but we will go through a few things. You had presentations on the annual audit and participation in your SAP evaluations. Today, we're going to cover the year-to-date budget results for operational revenues and expenditures. We will not cover any capital projects or special revenue funds. And then you will hear from the Fire Department later this morning for departmental overviews. We will come back to Council in May with presentations on fund accounting and revenue restrictions, as well as department overviews from utility, public works, stormwater, and parks and rec. In June, we will present to you the property tax overview and trim deadlines. In the months of July and August, we will hold multiple budget presentations where you will have the opportunity to read the numbers in detail as we move through the budget process with adoption in September. So we will now move on to our year-to-date revenues. Helena will start with the breakdown for the fiscal year 2023 budgeted revenue by source. And as a reminder, everything we are presenting today is for the fiscal year 2023 budget.
So this is a look at the city as a whole, so it includes operational revenues as well as capital revenues, such as impact fees, the small county surtax, and grants. As you can see, ad valorem taxes account for approximately 10% of all of our revenues. The largest category comes from charges for services. That's where there is a direct correlation between receiving a service and paying for that service. Like a good example is our water and wastewater utility as customers pay for their usage. Operational revenues for the general fund, as you can see, our major revenue source for the general fund is ad valorem tax. We collected approximately 94%, which is typical for our city at this time of year. The deadline for payment is April 1, so we will be receiving additional distributions from the tax collector in the next couple months. The half-sent sales tax and communication services tax, that represents the first four months of the fiscal year. If you annualize those numbers, we should meet the budgeted revenues for communications, and we should be realizing additional revenue from the half-sent sales tax. We'll continue to monitor the state revenues and update our projections as we move forward with the budget season.
Ms. Alves, may I just stop you for a moment? As we go through these slides, what do the green and the yellow on the charts delineate?
Yes, so our green, we're right on target. Yellow is we're watching, and this is kind of what the detail of what presenting is basically the numbers that we're watching.
Okay, thank you.
So as we move forward, you'll see that theme, sorry.
More explanation.
So the state revenue sharing, that represents six months of distribution, so it's running right on target. Permits, fees, and assessments are ahead, and that is mostly due to an increase in planning permit revenue. This slide, we have a breakdown of parks and recreation revenue along with other charges for services, judgments, and fines and forfeitures. So parks and recreation general is at 37%. That is normal for this time of year due to the summer programming, including camp that starts in the third quarter. The aquatic center is at 20%, which should be an increase starting in the third quarter as well, when the weather gets warmer and school is out. Other charges for services and judgments and fines are lagging a bit, but that is comparable to previous years, and those revenues should catch up by the end of the fiscal year. This is a look at our proprietary funds operating revenues, again, through March 31. Water and wastewater charges for services are typically behind four to six weeks since utility billing is always for the previous month, so we don't expect any deviations from budget at the end of the fiscal year. The same applies to the solid waste charges and stormwater since they're attached to the utility bills. The IT Enterprise Fund, this is the fiber cell tower fund, is running ahead of budget mainly due to cell tower revenues being above the amounts that we projected. So this completes our review of revenues. Before we move on to expenditures, do you have any questions on our operational revenues?
I have more of a comment. So when I'm looking at budget numbers, it's easier for me, and I do appreciate the yellow and the green highlights, but it doesn't give me an indication as to where we were at this time in the prior year. So I know you don't have that slide probably right this minute, but that is something that I am going to ask, and if you would share that with all of City Council. Otherwise, I'm operating from, we are where we should be. I'm not quite sure where that is. Again, I don't have your experience, so I would like to see the delta between the prior year and this year where it's possible.
Absolutely.
And that would apply also to the expenditure side, so I don't have to make the comment again.
Okay. Yep, we'll add that and we'll send it to Council.
I do have a question, and I appreciate that because I would also like to see, so just for comparable purposes. On the slide with regards to judgment, fines, and forfeitures, what are the main sources of those monies usually?
So a large majority of that is the fines that come through us through code enforcement. This is where you're going to find the hazardous tree removal, the mitigation, and then cases as they're closed and judgments are paid and come back to the city. And we can get you a detail of where we were last year and what these are for this year.
Okay, thank you. And then what about the forfeitures? Is that the same?
It's fines and forfeitures, yes.
Okay. Is there a reason, and again, I think the comparable numbers will help with this, but I feel like our population has gone up, but it seems that some of these are not on target, maybe? I mean, are we a concerning pace behind where we were at this time last year or no?
No, so some of these end up on the tax bill. So as we prepare the assessment for Council, and I think it's July, I think is when it's scheduled to come to you, then it'll turn into revenue, just in accounting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we are six months into the fiscal year, so expect to be under 50% for our budget to actual for operational funds. Any areas of concern, I highlighted in yellow, and we'll review the yellow highlights with you. We meet with the City Manager and Department Directors quarterly, and we review budget results. Some of the common challenges continue to be, of course, the impact of inflation to the overall budget, increase in repairs and maintenance due to aging infrastructure, challenges in attracting and retaining staff, as well as still some supply chain issues. Now, as the departments come to you and they present their individual overviews, they will be able to discuss these into more detail. I'll now pass it on to Gwen, and she'll go over expenditures.
Okay, so first, we're going to talk about the administration and finance. The total budget for the fiscal year 2023 was 6.16 million. The total expended to date is approximately 2.5 million, approximately 40% expended. We don't anticipate any budgetary issues at this point. There are timing issues for subscriptions that are paid at certain points in the fiscal year, and timing of hiring of new hiring staff or implementing a new program, but these should even out by the end of the fiscal year. Community development has a total budget for fiscal year 2023 of 9.6 million. The total expended to date is approximately 3.7 million, so that's 39% expended. Planning Division is at 39% due to timing of the comprehensive plan budget, as well as other operational expenses that are due to happen in the second half of the year. The building fund is at 37% due to operational expenses that, again, will happen in the second half of the year, as well as transfers to capital projects and fleet of 271,000. Public safety, to include the Fire Department, as well as the enhanced law enforcement services contract with Flagler County Sheriff's Office, have a total budget of 19.36 million for fiscal year 2023. The total expended to date is 8.2 million, so approximately 42%. You will notice that these percentages fall within the expected levels. Parks and Recreation, including the Palm Harbor Golf Course, Tennis Center, and Aquatic Center, as well as Parks Maintenance, has a total budget for fiscal year 2023 of 8.4 million. The total expended to date is approximately 3.5 million, so approximately 42% expended. The percentages fall into the expected level, except where we have Parks and Recreation is at 38% due to an increase in field trip expense and order for summer camps and programs. The Aquatic Center is at 33% due to their busiest time being the summer. The Public Works Department has a total budget for fiscal year 2023 at 25.6 million. The total expended to date is approximately 10.1 million, so approximately 39% has been expended. Fleet Management includes 7.5 million of capital purchases. There are significant lag issues still with equipment and vehicle purchases. So currently, we still have 771,000 outstanding from fiscal year 2022, and 4.7 million for fiscal year 2023 that has not been received. The water and wastewater total budget for fiscal year 2023 is 57.6 million. The total expended to date is approximately 31.6 million, so approximately 55% has been expended. The department includes the Administration Division, the Wastewater Division, and Water Division. These percentages are all in line. The non-departmental is over 50% mark since it includes debt service payments that are made in the first quarter, as well as transfers to utility capital for renewal and replacement. We continue on to the Stormwater Department. They have a total budget for fiscal year 2023 of 29.7 million. This includes 14.4 million of stormwater capital projects. The total expended to date is approximately 8.6 million, so approximately 29% has been expended. Some of the challenges that Stormwater is dealing vacant positions, timing of hiring, as well of cost for the MS4 permit that will occur in the second half of the fiscal year. The Operational Divisions have experienced staff turnover with physicians having periods of vacancies, as well as timing of hiring new staff. Capital is at 20% due to the L4 Weir Project, which will have most of the project expense in the third and fourth quarters. Also, London Waterway Expansion is the largest budgeted project for fiscal year 2023. Bids were received, but were over budget. So currently, the department is evaluating funding alternatives or project modifications. Lastly, we end with information technology. The department has a total budget for fiscal year 2023 of 6.8 million. The total expended to date is approximately 3.3 million, so approximately 48% expended. The Enterprise Fund is at 25% due to budgeted capital expenditures occurring in the third and fourth quarters, and the (inaudible) to yearly subscriptions that are purchased at the beginning of the year. We want to remind the public where they can find all of our budget information. As in previous years, we have set up the fiscal year 2024 budget preparation link on the city's website. This is where you will, where we will post all of our presentations, budget calendar, and any supporting documentation as we move through the budget process. Again, we will work with Communications Team to make sure we are keeping the public updated on where to find all this great information. And as a reminder, we will be back May 23 to review revenue restrictions and fund accounting. This completes our presentation. If you have any questions.
I have an informational question, if I may. So our fiscal year, so we're halfway through. If we use the straight-line budgeting method, which we don't use, you would expect to be at 50% of both your revenue and your expenses. Can you just help me with the top-level reasons why our fiscal year and the calendar year, it looks like we are well below the 50% mark in most cases? And I'm just trying to understand why, and help the public understand why we would be below 50% at this point in the year.
So part of the reason, like the detail that we went over, is that some subscriptions or some projects are actually timed for the second part of the fiscal year. Some of the more administrative type of departments is hiring of staff. When we budget some of our positions, we don't budget to start on October 1. We actually budget to start later in the year, depending on what type of position, if it's something that's difficult to hire or is going to take a little bit more time. So filling those vacancies sometimes creates a lag, as well as, like I said, subscriptions. Some of the conferences are towards the summer months, not necessarily during the winter, so you will see the expenses catch up.
So to some extent, there's an intentional push towards the second half of the fiscal year. And again, I'm just trying to understand the weight and the magnitude of where we're at today. So most of it's intentional in terms of our planning?
Because some of our stuff is cyclical, so there's timing.
Because of that's what happens. Okay, sorry. Questions?
None.
I have a few questions. And I'm sorry, I'm going to take you back to the revenue pie chart. How do we line up with comparable cities as far as the types of revenues we're bringing in?
So diversity is always good. Our general fund, as you saw from the revenue slide, is still very reliant on ad valorem taxes.
No utility tax. That's something that's different than our neighbors.
Yes.
We don't have any, any utility tax here in the city.
And just to help, if I could just interject for a minute, so one of the mantras that we've been talking about is the misguided ad valorem tax liability on our residential property owners. So I think that may in fact answer the first part of your question, that we may not be easily identified with other similar cities that don't suffer that same tax skew towards the individual homeowners, if that helps get you part of the answer.
Well, and I appreciate that. I think that, yes, that's part of my point, but also, what, how are we essentially lining up with diversification? I know one of our SAP efforts is to diversify our revenues and at the same time try to relieve the tax burden on our homeowners for their ad valorem. So, but I don't want to make sure that we're going down a road with blinders on. So essentially, we want to make sure that we're headed in the right direction with our goals and our efforts and that we're not, you know, saying, okay, we're going to do this even though maybe comparable cities don't. So I know we have a lot of unique characteristics about our city, the canals, the roadways, that's part of it, but also want to make sure that we are doing what works in cities that are similar to ours.
Absolutely. Yep, and diversification is important so that we can mitigate fluctuations in the economy. Definitely.
So when you say charges for services, which is what customers are paying basically for their usage, is the 34% low, in your opinion?
I'm not really sure how that would compare to other communities. We do have a revenue restrictions and revenue presentation coming up to Council. We can bring some examples at that point if you would like us to.
That would be great, yeah. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And then I had a question about our Aquatic Center because it looks like we've brought in 20% of the revenues, but we've expended 33% of budget. I know that we changed some things with the Aquatic Center rather recently, and so just want to get your thoughts, or maybe perhaps we monitor this to make sure we're moving in the right direction with regards to what we're bringing in versus what we're spending.
So yes, the Aquatic Center, you'll see the revenue increase as we go through the summer months or where summer camp or when the schools are out, but that's a budget that's presented separately to Council also, so you'll have an opportunity to review that budget and review that with the Parks and Recreation overview presentations to Council. I believe they're on the 23rd, May 23 also.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing further.
So, and I appreciate your bringing up the So I appreciate your, your bringing up the diversification of, of revenues. Obviously, that needs to be a priority. I think we all understand that. And to your point, I think that there are some revenue streams that we may have not yet identified that others around us may be, you know, taking advantage of. So I'm sure that there, I believe there's a future presentation regarding diversification of various revenue streams for the future. Counselor?
Just also want to thank you for your efforts. I know none of this is fun, so.
You can't spell fund accounting without fun. That's true.
No, we put the fun in fund accounting.
There you go. Better.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, for your presentation. We appreciate that. Next up, we have a presentation, which is a resolution approving the City Council Strategic Action Plan. And I'm going to have to defer to the clerk. Does that resolution need to get read into the file? Because I don't have a copy to read in.
I think that could happen at our business meeting when it's taken
I don't need to make reference of it here today? Okay.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Lauren Johnston, Assistant City Manager. I'm here to walk you through your Strategic Action Plan Evaluation Number Two. This is, again, another listening session. We've cleaned up some language on the slides as you asked staff to go back and make sure we had more defined deliverables. We also moved some priorities into operation. So this is a clean look at what your priorities should look like for twenty-three and twenty-four. And then this is just where we are on our timeline. So our next step would priorities on second. And then in June, as we are in the budget cycle, staff to you an outline priorities should cost, where they're funded out of, and how much staff time it should take to complete that priority. This is a clean look at your pillars of priority. These are our, this is our foundation for not only encompassing all of your priorities, but also any type of operational procedures moving forward. We want to make sure that these are well-rounded and diverse. We took all of your feedback from your last session, and this is a clean copy. I'll move on to, again, just reaffirming our views and vision. There was only one change here, and again, this is just a clean copy of what that looks Okay, we'll move into our first priority. This is a remaining priority for City Council. Town Center should promote a home for arts and culture, including opportunities for performance, display, and creative expression. And an objective here is staff to investigate grant opportunities and other funding sources. Okay, our next priority is Palm Coast Brands, its future as becoming a city on the rise to include a regional model for medical training, technology, and careers. Okay. The next one is develop economic opportunity tools and communication strategies to support and sustain small businesses. Objectives here being create a business recruitment process to diversify our business offerings in our community, develop a fast-tracking process to cut red tape, minimize delays in opening, and make more financially feasible. And the last one, focus on commercial development, including retail and restaurants in the Town Center core.
I'm just going to make a comment here about item B. I certainly would favor fast-tracking all of our processes with regards to small businesses. But I for one am not aware of anything but a lingering urban legend about the city of Palm Coast being business unfriendly. So I would ask staff, when we have our next set of individual interviews, to bring me up to date on any specific complaints that we've had the last two years, just so that, I want to make sure I'm not repeating the stories of the past. And in fact, we do have people that are able to identify places that we can expedite the process. Just, that's a one comment just from me.
I would second that comment.
Again, if it's, you know, if it's real, for sure, but okay, good. Thank you.
I just have a comment about item C on this slide. I don't know how this is congruent with our promotion in Town Center of a home for arts and culture, including opportunities for performance, display, and creative expression. So I just want to make sure that staff doesn't feel conflicted at all in what our true efforts are and what we're doing with Town Center. I know that we have discussed a lot of different directions that we can take Town Center, but it seems we need to be on the same page with regards to what our efforts are really going to go towards and what, what monies it's going to bring in for the future of Palm Coast. So I don't know what the consensus is from my colleagues here, but to me, these are not congruent with one another. And I don't know if maybe they can be, or if one is more of a, what are we doing now versus kind of arts and culture later, once we have more monies to do it? But I just think that these need to comport better with one another.
So
They're not complementary?
Go ahead.
Don't you think that those could be potentially complementary as well?
I think they could be, sure, but again, I think if we're, especially I'm trying to give our new Economic Development Director kind of more direction, what are we really trying to attract to Town Center? And then furthermore, if we have a website that is, you know, supposed to be promoting, bringing businesses and events here, what can people really look to for clear direction? I mean, are we going to give incentives for certain things over others? And so when we're looking at arts and culture versus true retail, I don't know that those two really do comport. They can but I just, maybe it's a timeline that I'm looking for. I mean, what are we doing now versus in the future? I don't know. Just for me, this isn't, these are non-congruent.
Well, I don't think they're mutually exclusive, though. In my opinion, I think Town Center has many components to it. As, I'm, I'm fine switching verbiage around, but I just was making a, a comment. I think that they are, we're not, it's not all town, Town Center's not all arts or commercial.
Sure.
But I just think that these initiatives kind of set the tone for what we're trying to do moving forward of diversification of the tax base to more commercial. But I'm, I'm all ears to my colleagues as well.
I think your, your point is well-taken, and Vice Mayor, you may have a comment as well, but I'm in agreement that staff probably could use some more specific either guidance or direction on, on short-term steps. You know, midterm and long-term, okay, then we get into some philosophical arguments and whether bricks and mortar, and we've had these discussions, and we will have them again. But I would be in favor of offering staff some of our recommendations as we again meet one-on-one with staff on short-term our next three goals in the next, you know, between now and the end of the upcoming election cycle, let's say. In other words, during that time period, what can we really do? And I think that we should be responsible to offer a vision to that effect and then let staff come back with the operational components of that vision, if that, if that would help a little bit.
Yeah, definitely. And I think to Councilman Clufus's point, I mean, I, you know, the way that I've envisioned Town Center is kind of a, trying to make it somewhat of a swanky, you know, wine bar restaurant type of place where we can also offer arts and culture and things like that. And those things do feed off of one another, but right now, what are we, what are we going to spend our money and efforts on right now in this moment? And I think in this moment, if we're going to really build Palm Coast, it needs to be more based on economic development, knowing that in the future, our goal is to bring arts and culture here. But the immediate ROI for arts and culture is just not there. I mean, that's, that's the fact. So I, I just think some direction, like and also economic development as to how we achieve more immediate goals versus long-term goals is what I'm kind of looking for here.
Okay. Okay. I'm good.
Yeah, okay, no. Okay.
I think, though, that, I think we're in agreement with what we're saying is that, I think, would you concur that focusing on a commercial prioritization would be more fruitful in the, in the short term?
Absolutely, I do. Yes.
And I think to, to, to our, to City Council's benefit, I think setting expectations properly for the public, in other words, so that we know and the public knows what to expect, so that we're not thinking about, well, where is all of that that we talked about? So I think each of us will make a, well, there's a consensus here to work with you as we have our individual one-on-ones which are upcoming, to try to help better define our vision so that you can operationalize it. Fair enough?
Yes, that works, Mayor. Okay, moving on to our next priority. This was asked of staff to go back and clean up the language on this particular priority. Palm Coast Future Expansion is guided by master planning for smart managed growth. Staff to develop an infrastructure plan to include public safety, conservation, water resources, transportation, and economic resiliency. And staff to also create a communication strategy to promote business recruitment and community benefits.
I don't think you missed anything in that shopping cart. There's a, there's a lot there to unpack.
One thing is, we're having this discussion, is I think we need to also focus on some incentives for businesses to come here, and that's kind of left out of this.
Question?
So let me, let me make a statement, then we can agree to discuss it. What I would like to suggest, if we can get consensus, is that economic development could be responsible, because it's an operational kind of an issue, to bring forward incentives, some of which we've tried in the past. There could be new forms and also looking at surrounding communities, what might have been successful. And let the, the Department, let economic development come forward with a menu of the potential incentives, because the other thing we need to do at the same time is look at that impact on the budget.
Sure.
To make sure that, that the, the benefit will outweigh the cost of the incentive in some timeline.
Sure, in the long term.
Exactly. And we may have to invest in order to get to our reward at the end. I understand that. I would like to put, I get a nod from you, on economic development to show us, lead the way on what those potential incentives might look like based on, you know, the study they do and, and the people that they're talking to locally and around the state.
I mean, if we want whatever business to come here, and they've got a choice between us and St. Augustine or whatever, I, I think we may have to put some stuff on the table with a payoff five years down the road for us, but we may have to, you know, spend money to make money, I think is important.
So I think everyone here agrees, a proactive approach. As our, as we are rising in our ranking as number one in our MSA, as the third fastest-growing city in the state of Florida, pre-Florida, and everything else, it would behoove us to get in front, I mean, that's, that's a lot to get in front of, but
And plus, we have the lowest crime rate, except for the villages, right?
Second, second in the state. If we don't step in front of that, how are we going to lead the way? So I agree.
Exactly. So I, I think, you know, that's what's kind of missing here, and I think we need to put that in.
Totally. And just a quick note, I also am a huge proponent of incentives that we can offer, which have a multiple, a multiplier effect, essentially what in the past we've done with, with offering access to our broadband network with Joya Sales. That's something where, you know, a communication company or a company will pay AT&amp;T for business data, you know, fifteen hundred dollars a month, whereas it's the same fiber that goes into our homes as well. And we're able to expand and give them access, which save them like twenty-five hundred dollars, you know, per month for two years, three years, however long the payout, the but I think those type of things that I'd be super intrigued to see, things that we can provide as a city that might be some of the more hidden services that have a multiplier effect where it costs us a thousand dollars to install fiber, but maybe saves them fifty thousand dollars down the long haul. I think those are very powerful incentives.
I think we sort of need a list, like, like you suggested.
And what I would, in terms of direction for staff, so I'd like you to debrief each of us during your individual one-on-ones on what our understanding of incentivization is, because incentives can be a complicated rabbit hole. So make sure we all understand that, and then I think the, the idea of a list of, of a template or various templates that we might discuss up would be, would be worthwhile. And if, can you bind that into your existing SAP?
Mayor, this is why I pulled up the previous slide on economic development, and your first objective here is to create business recruitment process by business offerings. We could easily modify this, Vice Mayor, to add incentives, if you will, and that might satisfy Council's direction.
Yeah, I, I think so. I, I think that, especially in this economic environment we're in, we do need to compete a little bit harder. And, and not only on the incentives, but I also, and I'm sure you're doing this, but we need to promote all the amenities that we have too. You know, our canals, for instance, you know, all of our parks, all of that. This is a great place to live. You got the ocean, you got the canals, you got wonderful parks, a community center, you know, and we're expanding, and we got a great fire department. We're not going to count the villages, right? So, but I think that's also part of the incentive break for however many years, knowing that you're going to be employing X number of people and
I mean, it's, it's, it's a very, it's well said and supports the concept of growth for the long term. I mean, we're here with a, a bag of, of Lego blocks, which we have not enjoyed in the past, which you're now going to assemble into a future for generations to come. So that should certainly be a natural part of the conversation.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Does that give you enough to, to move forward as you work with each of us going forward?
Yes, thank you. And I'm going to move past this slide since we were good with the encompassing changes that staff has made. Okay. Moving on, conduct an analysis of new and untapped revenue sources to help lessen the reliance on residential property taxes and relieve the burden on residential homeowners. And this is, I think, to Council's previous discussion, our Finance Director. The next priority is millage rate should be revenue neutral for taxpayers. Okay. The next priority is staff to conduct an analysis of commercial solid waste hauling. Okay. We're moving on to the next pillar, which is
I'm sorry, I, I, let me just go back for a second. So that's not a study, that's a staff project?
Correct. I mean, it could transition, we're not sure yet. It
And my, my, my fear there is, and I only mean this in the most positive way, does staff currently possess the, the expertise and the experience to analyze commercial solid waste hauling? It's, it's my understanding business if you have been in it for a long time. Do you feel comfortable that that's a staff responsibility?
I'll answer it in this way, Mayor. That first, staff would need to do a precursor analysis to establish what those phases would be, and if there was an external cost from a consultant or things of that nature. So that's why it's starting with staff.
Okay, I appreciate that. That makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to our next pillar, which is safe and reliable services. This is ensuring that the Maintenance and Operations Complex, our MOOC, is our top priority facility project in our CIP. The next priority is identifying local recreation demands to balance the need for regional activity centers. And if Council remembers, this is actually a project that we're working alongside with, a county-wide master plan. Those results will come to you at the end of June, so this is a continuation of that priority.
We're going to, for instance, Park and Recreation, we're going to make a list, what's our number one priority, what's our number two, what's our number three, so that we don't go back to picking from, you know, in the middle of the list and
Yes, sir.
Not have direction.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
This is also a remaining priority, trying to relieve the parking pressures at the community center, but also evaluating the preservation and repurpose of Fire Station Twenty-Two. If you recall, we are doing a study with Schinkin Schultz, who is the design firm, doing Fire Station Twenty-Two and also potentially Fire Station Twenty-Six. So as information becomes available, we will bring this information back to City Council.
We have any sort of timeframe on that information?
We met Schinkin Schultz onsite, I believe, two weeks ago. That was the last update that I have. So it'll probably take four to six weeks for them to do their analysis, and then we would bring that back.
And that, I mean, that I assume would include cost analysis, right?
Yes, we did ask for them to look into that.
Thanks.
The next priority is new, evaluate hiring The next priority is new, evaluate hiring a dedicated grant writer or consultant for the city to identify and secure the multitude of grants from federal and state agencies. This was modified from your previous meeting. We heard, you know, a couple of different things, so we put in language to add a consultant based off of, you know, if a grant is required, acquired, then they may get a percentage-based, commission-based for that grant. So this was just adding some language modification.
Yeah, I think that's the way we need to go. If you're working for us for two years and you haven't brought us anything, you know, of substance, I think the rate is motivational, to say the least.
I think we have consensus.
Yeah, it does.
No, we're in agreement with that.
Okay, great. The next priority is safe and reliable services again, but this is a new priority on continue to focus on residential safety and conduct a comprehensive approach to neighborhood safety. And several objectives here, evaluating the legality and possibility of lowering residential street speed limits, explore what speed tracking devices has successfully reduced residential speeds in comparable cities and communities, and then also work with our Sheriff's Office to identify and enforce problem areas.
So the only comment I'll make there, I mean, this is an incredibly important pillar, street safety. You have, I don't know, maybe it's semantics, I would move that up today because changing speed limits and changing the methods by which we try to calm the traffic and congestion on the streets only works if we have a way to enforce it simultaneously. You can go ahead and change a street sign or lower a speed limit, but if you also at the same time have to be able to enforce it if you're going to realize a benefit. So maybe it doesn't really need to be moved, but I just want to underscore that you need to have this balance, not just from the city changing, but the support of enforcement in order to realize the benefit.
And we can work with our Sheriff's Office on understanding, you know, the, what they're getting and then provide back to...
I was going to raise a point. Now, just, this is just something I've noticed recently. We talk a lot about street safety. We talk about what we're going to do, getting ahead of accidents, you know. Oftentimes, we hear commenters say, "It's going to be too late" when, you know, something does happen. We're working around us. We kind of are seeing things happen and it could just potentially be statistical anomalies, but there have been so many accidents where people have lost their lives when they drive into lakes. And I feel like there's potential here for us to kind of just address an issue that people, unfortunately, have fallen victim to drowning in these lakes. And I know there's technology that's available that it's for gunfire. Basically, they triangulate these loud noises and they can tell, you know, somebody where they're shooting a weapon or discharging a firearm, I should say. But I'm curious as to if the Council would, you know, like to investigate some other safety mechanisms that might be in place that can actually detect when a car crashes into a lake. I feel like we are losing citizens, you know, at an unfortunate pace, just looking at the news. It's just something that, we talk about street safety often, but if, you know, I take a step back and I say, "Hey, look where people have actually passed away unfortunately in just in a small time period." That might be something that the staff would be able to investigate and just bring something before Council.
I mean, I think everybody here certainly understands. And I would go a step further and I'm sure I'm going to take a step too far here, but I was thinking about the same tragedies and I'm just wondering, and it would be an underlying part of this pillar, we have become a city of bad drivers. And I'm going to say it out loud. I see it. It's like I pride myself in being a defensive driver and I'm not sure I'm even defensive enough, but everybody in town needs to become or continue to be a defensive driver now. Is there some additional training? Is there some additional benefit or incentive that we could get our drivers to take another course, to learn something more, to understand that if we don't, as a community, learn to drive better, we're going to continue to kill each other or ourselves? And it's really a problem. I know it's a big stretch and a big reach and I'm not looking to compete with, you know, driver's licensing or any of that, but maybe there, maybe we could, you know, talk to insurers, for example, and say, "Hey, our city is leading the way to become safer drivers by being defensive drivers. And if we can prevent some number of tragedies from happening, maybe that's a good thing that would not be cost prohibitive to the city, but make our streets safer for both our older population and our children as well."
Sure. We can definitely look into that collaboration. You know, the city, as our organization, we participate in defensive driving classes and it helps with our insurance. So maybe it could be something as a community benefit, offering the community center for, you know, an additional class or something of that nature.
And to your point, I mean, there are natural hazards which are a part of the lifestyle, the quality of life here that we enjoy, but can also be represented danger. So making people aware that, you know, you've got to pay attention when you're driving near one of these, you know, amenities, you know, save your life or someone's life. So I appreciate that.
And I still don't want to lose sight, though. The biggest safety thing we can do with driving is law enforcement because that gets people's attention. You know, when one of our deputy pulls you over and writes you a ticket for rolling through that stop sign or running that red light, you know, that's a steep fine. And if you do it again, it's going to be steeper and your insurance company is going to raise your rate. So I really do want to see us have a much larger presence of law enforcement on our streets, as much as we can do. I know our sheriff has a lot of area to cover, but we see it every day. We see people run through red lights like there's no tomorrow, you know, not using turn signals and cutting across several lanes, you know, and God forbid, just go out on I-95. I mean, you're taking your life into your own hands on I-95. And we have a lot of accidents on I-95 right, you know, off of Palm Coast. So I think law enforcement is really a key part of bringing safety back to our community.
Thank you.
I concur, Vice Mayor. And I think what I would kind of like to see, and I know we've been speaking with Sheriff's Office on this, is the data with regard to what tickets are being issued, how often, where, where are they being issued? And I think that that helps from our standpoint, feeling comfortable with our, with the manner in which we're spending our taxpayer dollars for these contract services, but also for the public's benefit. So if we know that a certain amount of tickets are given out on Palm Coast Parkway during a certain time period, maybe that will make people say, "Oh, you know what? There's a heavy police presence here. I need to slow down when I'm on Palm Coast Parkway." So I think the benefits of having that data come to the forefront are exponential.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the feedback, City Council. We'll move on to our next pillar which is civic engagement. Encourage residents to learn more about their community and our history. The next priority here is create an opportunity for residents to participate in town hall style meetings. Evaluate options for in-person and virtual formats. Moving on to our last pillar which is sustainable environment and infrastructure. Priority here is collaborate with FPL and community partners to provide electric vehicles fast charging stations across multiple locations in the city. And an objective here being explore ways to add revenues for street improvements and enterprise fund through user fees for EV charging stations.
We need to charge for this service, in other words.
No pun intended.
Sorry, sorry.
Nailed it. That's pretty good.
Sorry, Nick, but at the price of gasoline, I know you're not paying. We need to get some money out of you.
Yep, agreed.
And our last priority is develop a plan for the maintenance of the saltwater canals.
Ms. Johnson, do we have a timeline on our survey from the Taylor Engineering Group?
Yes, they should be, and Carl might be able to come up to the podium and help me with this, but my last update from him was that they should be coming back to City Council present in June. The survey has been complete, but we're just in the process of reviewing that analysis.
Are they looking into possible grants as part of the survey?
I'm sure they are, but I don't know the specifics of that.
Carl, thanks.
It's in the scope of work, I think, on their contract.
Okay.
Okay. That concludes our evaluation of our priorities.
So if I could just stop you just for a second. So just as a note for the record, so how many priorities was that?
That is sixteen.
And that's reduced from last year's?
Twenty.
And how many in prior years? It was even more still?
Like fifty-six.
Right, fifty-six. So I mean, I think the point is important that we're going narrow and deep on City Council's priorities so that we can be measured on our and the city's performance by the public so we can make progress on these and also have a realistic budget to make these things happen. I think it's important to realize that. But I would say, I think you've captured, at least I'll speak for myself, you certainly captured all of my items in your strategic action priorities and I assume, based on the comments today, that everybody's, we have consensus. Thank you.
Okay. Our next steps would be adoption at your business meeting on May 2nd, and I thank you for your time this morning.
We thank you and all your hard efforts and we look forward to our one-on-ones that are upcoming. Next item on the agenda will be number three, which is a presentation by our fire department. And while the chief is coming forward, I didn't stop you before, but when you were talking about the pillar regarding the community, learning more about our history and all of that, I neglected to stop you to talk about the incredible celebration of our fire department's 50th anniversary with a truck that was quite old, but not quite as old as I am, that was displayed at the firehouse, but the turnout was spectacular and the event was momentous. So I want to thank all of your folks for putting on such a great show.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor, and Kyle Berryhill, Fire Chief, Palm Coast Fire Department. And thank you guys so much for attending. It was such a special day for us. We're really proud of being, of the fact that we've served our community for 50 years protecting it and what we're doing every day is something that I know you're proud of and it was really great to see our citizens out there and be able to celebrate that with us, which is a great segue into what we're going to talk about today. We're going to discuss a little bit about how we've done so far this year, where we're headed for, as we prepare for budget in the next year, and talk a little bit about some of the ways that we measure whether or not we're doing a great job and just give you a little overview of how we're thinking about that. So let's go ahead and dive right in. Ms. Johnson just talked about our pillars of priorities as a city and as the fire department certainly, reliable services are a part of what we do on a daily basis. So then how do we deliver those safe and reliable services to our citizens? How do we measure what the level of service they've come to expect is and how do we decide if we are meeting that need? So there's three pillars of effective fire service. First is staffing. We need great people. We need to put them in the right spot and we need a strong organizational culture of empowerment, of succession planning, of training, of preparing folks for the next job and of a great customer service culture where we treat our residents and each other like family. If we have that great staff, but when we get in the truck, it doesn't go, it's going to be hard for us to do our mission. So the next pillar that we need is reliable apparatus and equipment. And so that's our, that's the second thing we need to deliver great fire service. And if we have the greatest people, and I think we do, and we have some great equipment, there's still a point where if our stations are too far, we can't overcome the distance. And so we're going to talk a little bit about how we've designed the system to meet the need with those, based on those three pillars, and when it's time to make a new decision or a growth decision. And we're doing all of this in a data-driven way. Ms. Bevan has always given us a direction that says we don't make decisions based on emotion or feeling, we do it based on data. And so a lot of that is derived from our tenure plan. That's an ongoing document that we're working through to this day. We're in the fourth year of it. The first part of it, we developed a fire impact fee report so that existing residents won't pay for the impact of new residents moving in. That's going to create an additional need. And so we're going to see how that is going to continue to fund things that our residents need today. We're always doing data analysis. We're looking at call volume. We're looking at response times. We're looking at how much capacity is in the system. We're looking at if we're meeting our key performance indicators. So that's a part of our tenure plan. We developed those through that and we're working to get better at that every day. And we performed a fire station staffing analysis that determined how many people we need to do the job in an effective way, in a way that our citizens can understand and what they expect. We'll talk about that. We've got, we've got to replace them in a way that both ensures their reliability and also is fiscally responsible. So we're working through that process. That's always a part of our budget conversation. And then everyone on the dais has seen our growth methodology report. And so we're going to utilize that a little bit to measure where our department is today as far as how our stations are acting and where we'll, what our threshold is for potential growth in that way. So staffing starts with our mission and our values. And our mission in the fire department that your firefighters picked, that they came up with this, this wasn't me and it wasn't Jerry, they decided this. It's delivering the best service to our community every time. And we use that as a measure, as, one, we don't always pick the outcome in the fire department. Sometimes they're not great. You guys were talking about some we've had this week that are kind of beyond our ability to recover from. But we do get to check our processes. So if we put the best process in place every time, then we should get better outcomes and that's what we believe. Additionally, we use that with each other. Was that your best? If it wasn't your best, then we can get a little bit better. Maybe it wasn't your best preparation. Maybe even, we use that as a measure. Our best is the standard. And so then we balance that with our values. Our family, we want to treat each other and our customers like family. We use that as a measure of, are we a good enough paramedic? Are we a good enough ride-up driver or lieutenant? Would you let that person respond to your family? That's part of our measure. And then how we treat our customer, how we treat each other. Integrity is doing the right things for the right reasons every time, regardless of who's looking, and that's pretty self-explanatory. And then loyalty is both to our people and to our values. If one of our people starts to stray from our values, we go get them and bring them back. And again, your firefighters picked these. They were not something that we handed from the top down. That's what they said they believe in. So how are we organized? Well, we respond 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. I know Ms. Carly Pateira understands that. And so we're split into three shifts, A, B, and C. A is on today. The three shifts are split in, this is our career side, the three shifts are split into two battalions, a north battalion and a south battalion. And those two battalions each contain three suppression companies that respond with usually three firefighters, occasionally two, sometimes four. And so then additionally, we have our volunteer component. We'll talk about that a little bit. And we have our battalion chief of fire prevention who performs our business inspections, works with community development as we are growing to make sure that every one of our citizens is going to be protected and going to have access to fire service protection. And then our battalion chief of training helps us with our KPI of being able to put a new, of training our people so that we're ready to add a fire station worth of people at any time. So our staff, what are they thinking about? We've got a little bit of an expanding threat matrix and I'm going to come back to that. Our incident priorities in the fire department are, first, life safety. We're willing to risk a lot to save a lot when it comes to life safety. Second is property conservation. We're willing to risk something to save people's things. It matters to us and we work hard at that. And finally, incident stabilization. We don't arrive at something that's already occurred like a burglary. We arrive at incidents that are always ongoing and our first goal is to stop that growth, start to contract it, and get back to what we consider normal. And when I started in the fire service, you would not have seen firefighters dressed in tactical gear like you can see in this picture. But this is us training with Commander Reynolds' peers on how we would respond to a hostile threat event. That was not a thing 17 years ago, but it is a thing today. And so as the threat grows, we're not going to back away. We're going to continue to be there to respond. And essentially, the fire service has decided that we're not going to let people bleed to death while we wait outside. So this is something we're working really hard at and we've got some great partnerships with the Sheriff's Office. And that's part of though what your firefighters are dealing with is understanding how we respond as an all-hazard agency to hazard matrix that's changing. So our staffing analysis is a report that we performed as part of our tenure plan that essentially evaluates how we can be efficient and effective in our resource deployment. We didn't just use local data, we used the National Institute of Standard and Technology as a data source. And this helps to determine our level of service and how many firefighters it takes to get the job done. And so that study said that firefighters arriving at the first, as part of the first arriving operation was optimal for performing routine fire ground tasks. It let us do more things faster and we're definitely in the time business. We'll talk about that in just a second. Luckily, in Palm Coast, we are supplemented by great partners with Flagler County Fire Rescue. And in three of our stations there is rescues. They look, they're ambulances, but because they're staffed with firefighters, we call them rescues. And so they make up two of those five in three of our houses. Station 25 contains ladder 25, which acts as a regional response truck. So four out of our five houses, we're able to get those five people on scene responding together as a crew. You also see that Station 26 is in there in green. It doesn't exist yet, but we will talk a... But we will talk a little bit about what the triggers are for that. And our plan for that would be to staff it with three firefighters. So that's our staffing part of the leg of our stool. And we're really proud of it. And we think we're doing a great job, even though we have some challenges. We'll discuss here in a second. So the next is our apparatus and equipment. Another thing that we're blessed with Palm Coast Public Works with Fleet. And they help us to maintain a reliable fleet for the fire service and, and help us to create the vision for how we replace that fleet in the future. So your fleet is five frontline engines, four backup engines, two aerial trucks, three wildland trucks, and then several support or vehicles or trailers. An example of one of those is we have a confined space team that we're required to have based on our utility department entering those kind of situations. And so some people would spend a lot more money on something like an apparatus that could go anywhere from six to seven figures on something like a heavy rescue. We've accomplished that with a $15,000 trailer where we've got a lot of equipment in it and we have a process for responding in that way. It's what we call a high-risk, low-incidence event. And so we're trying to prepare in an appropriate manner. So because our fleet gives us a lot of flexibility, a lot of depth, and is incredibly reliable because that's what's required of it, we're able to beef up our response in something like, like we did this fall for Ian and Nicole. And essentially, almost double what we can respond to. We were prepared to maybe do that this summer and it's not, we're not out of the woods yet on that. And certainly our neighbors in Volusia aren't. But we're able to bring that capacity up again for the high-risk, low-incidence events. That's not what we're trying to pay for every day, but we want to be able to beef up and go. And we would switch from a three-shift model to a two-shift model in those situations. So some challenges associated with apparatus and equipment is that if we were to order a new fire truck today, if we signed off on a letter of intent today, there's a 24-month lead time that we've been hearing about for a few years. I was actually on a call with a colleague of mine who's a chief in California. And LA City just placed an order for 10. And they got a response back that it's going to be 27 months. I'm not going to ask you to place an order for 10 anytime soon, but if that tells you what the demand is when there's, when that level of a customer is at 27 months, you can just see that the supply chain issues aren't over for us in the fire service. And we're also seeing rising costs for new apparatus. We currently have a truck that you've already funded that's in line. If we were to order that truck today, it would cost $70,000 more. And so when we're seeing costs at 12 to 14% annual increase, that's something that we're looking at how we design our system to see how we can make a better impact. And then our fleet does a great job of keeping our trucks in service, but the supply chain constraints and the rising cost for parts, for apparatus, repair and maintenance are something that sometimes make us hold our breath when something breaks on a fire truck. We haven't had to deal with an extended timeline to date, but we've had a couple of near misses. And it's certainly something that we're keeping an eye on. And then finally, station 22's limitations. It's well, it's well documented with this council that station 22 is from a different era and that it's small. So we spend more money to put less fire truck in there. And our two least reliable pieces of our fleet, both are the two that fit in that station. So although we're really proud of our apparatus and equipment and we believe in its reliability, it's not a perfect system and we do have some challenges associated with there. That takes us to the third leg of our fire department stool, which is fire stations. So when we're talking about that, it's really important to remember that we're in the time business, which is why you see the graphics about the fire propagation curve and the survival rate for cardiac arrest. The fire propagation curve just says essentially that things that are on fire get more on fire until somebody intervenes. Eventually, they become totally on fire and totally destroyed. There's a point where we stop having the ability to save life in that situation. There's a point where we stop having the ability to protect the property when things become fully involved. The sooner we're able to intervene, the better are outcomes for our residents and their stuff. And then the survival rate of cardiac arrest, again, once a person's heart stops beating, the sooner we're able to intervene, the better chance that person has of recovery. And so those are some of the things we'll talk about in a little bit. But when we're looking at stations, time matters and that's how we think about it. We have four metrics that are associated with that growth study that we're going to, you know, use as we measure if we're doing a great job or not. The first is the ISO five driving miles. So if you sleep within five driving miles of one of our fire stations, of a fire station, you enjoy our ISO rating of two. Today, every person that lives in a residence in Palm Coast does enjoy our ISO rating of two. And that's in the top 2% of fire departments in the United States. And it does a couple of things. It, it creates lower insurance rates. And we've already heard today about how that's kind of a crisis in our state. But it also provides a greater market. If you, and you can talk to residents in Flagler County who do not live that way and, and can sometimes be relegated to have to for home insurance rather than get to. Markets, we believe, drive down prices and that helps us there. So that's a great thing. And today, all of our residents, but we also have, I'm going to call it in the on-deck circle, some developments where things are outside of that five driving miles. And it'll be something that we'll have to make a decision on. Next is our city council goal of seven minutes or less 85% of the time. And although this doesn't correlate to a national standard, it's in between some national standards associated with urban and rural agencies. And it's been our standard for, since the city of Palm Coast has existed. And it is a good standard and we believe in it. And so we're going to look at our predictive data at how often we can get to a call seven minutes or less. And then we're going to look at how we've done so far in this fiscal year. And then finally, NFPA 1710 is the standard for deployment of a fire department. I'm paraphrasing a little bit. But the four minutes is how soon the first truck gets to an alarm. And the eight minutes is how soon all the trucks get to an alarm. And we're going to look at how we do on, we're going to use that as part of our tool for measuring our fire department. So where are your fire stations? This is fire station 21. I saw all of you there this weekend. It's got, it's, station logo is the heart of the city. And you can see it's right there next to Coles. It provides a tremendous amount of coverage in the heart of our city, in the Palm Coast Parkway corridor. What you're looking at is what we predict we'll be able to get to in a seven-minute response time that includes turnout. So we have some time to get in the truck and go and then some time for driving. And so that's what you see there. We're working with our GIS team to do that. So that's station 21. Station 22 on the east side, that's what it gets to today. The new site for station 22 is about a quarter mile to the east of where this is. The northern part of this predicted seven minutes or less is going to be a little bit reduced, but that'll still be covered by station 24. The southern part, you can see the Grand Haven neighborhood. We predict that we're not going to be able to get there. But when we move a little bit further to the east, it won't be a tremendous amount, but it will be more. We'll be able to cover a little bit more of that Grand Haven neighborhood in our, in, in what we consider our city council standard. Station 23 in the Indian Trails Matanzas area is our northwestern most station. And it covers that residential community very, very well. For many years, station, and it still is today, but I think this is the last year of that. Station 24 covers the existing canal areas, the F and the C section. And you can see it does a really great job of, we predict that it's going to do a really great job of getting to the calls within our city council standard. And you can see that everything along the Palm Coast Parkway corridor in north, we, we have very well covered from the Palm Coast Fire Department. Next is station 25. It's our headquarters and it covers the, you know, the area around Royal Palms, the R section, the P section. It gets into the Z section a little bit, the 100 corridor. And it has a huge area, a huge response impact. And you'll see that in a second. So that's our existing fire stations today. You can see that south of 100, there is a gap. It's covered by our partners at station 92. We'll talk a little bit about how they do. But, and you can also see we have a little, a road that doesn't exist today, even though it exists more today than it did a while ago, because they're cutting through a partnership between us and community development identified that when station 26 goes in, rather than have to put two stations, we can put one station and cover both. This is what station 26 would cover. This is what we predict it will cover once that's able to go in. And then you can see that we have a gap between station 21 and station 25. The Whiteview US-1 area, I think you also know that that area is not without growth. And so we predict that we can't get to there. We'll see a little bit how we do. But a mini station that's been called 25120, it doesn't have a name yet, and it's far away. But we predict that it would fill that gap. So what's our call volume like in station, in 2022? We ran 13,444 calls, which was continuation in our history, except for those first early years where it was like two or one. We've continued to have more calls every year. And this is our calls broken up by stations. So 21 ran 3,300 calls, 22, 2,400 calls, 23 and 24, 1,500 to 1,700 calls between those two. All respectable call volumes. Station 25 ran 4,100 calls in 2022. So you can see that 21 and 25 together. The future area for station 26 would have run 1,808 calls. And that's a conservative. We were able to model where the calls exist today, but we, we took a conservative approach. I believe it will be closer to 22's total, but we didn't want to be oversell it or be inflammatory here. But today, station 26 wouldn't be our slowest station, wouldn't be our second slowest station. It would be our, our right in the middle from call volume on a conservative basis. So when we're looking at how we're doing, we should look at what's, what's arrived and what's coming. 2022's calls probably weren't driven by the people who moved in during that year. Some of them probably moved in in December. So we know that they'll drive future calls. And so to the left, you can see, this is from our community development growth report. And the dark red areas are the areas where the most residential growth occurred. And you can see south of 100 has got a lot of dark red. So these are places that don't have to come to city council to put a new house. Approved, you just have to, you know, do the regular process. You can see that south of 100 is also the darkest red. So current growth has already existed in this area that's underserved and future growth is coming to that area. So I'm just going to take a pause here for a second. This is some data that was from the growth report. And so it's 2019 data. It took us 18 months to put this together and was a ton of work. And you might be saying, chief, how long are we going to use the 2019 data? Well, we're about done with that because something that Ms. Bevan has directed us to do is to try to find a way to make a significant impact on our operation that doesn't, that doesn't require us writing a huge check. So we sat in a meeting a couple of years ago, myself, Chief Tucker from Flagler County Fire Rescue, Chief Pace from Flagler Beach Fire Department. Ms. Petito was in the meeting as well. And a vendor came in and they presented to us this wonderful tool, software that would do this work for us in a special way. And the price tag was $100,000 once and then $100,000 every year. For that software. And they were very nice. We could share the software. So we came out of that meeting and none of us had that $100,000. And I didn't really feel like asking for it. So we started trying to figure out, is this something we could do together? And so we agreed to share data. So Flagler Beach, Flagler County and Palm Coast Fire Departments are all sharing their data today. And we're so close to being able to pull this report. Essentially, every 30 days, we'd be able to look backwards at that data from October 1st, 2021, when we all began being on the same incident reporting platform. We're going to be able to do that. It's partnerships with county and city GIS, partnerships with county and city fire staff. And, and kind of great direction, that collaboration is the, is the, is the, is the coin of the realm today rather than competition. So we're going to be able to do that with existing staff time. There's not going to be a $100,000 bill coming down the pike on that. So it's a really huge win for us. And so we'll be able, as we're getting closer to these decision points, to use real data. And so we're really proud of that. If you can look at how we've actually done, you saw a lot more call volume. The call volume has increased about 3,000 calls from 2019. And so we predict, to the left is how station 92 was doing in the Seminole Woods and Belter Boulevard area. It has nothing to do with the expertise of the Flagler County Fire Chief or the integrity or competence of the men and women in those stations. Both are excellent. It totally has to do with the miles. We would have predicted that it's too far to drive essentially south of the airport. And the data shows that it is. And it's alarmingly too far to drive in some places. Also, to the right is how we did throughout the city. And red, not good, green, good. And so the red area at Whiteview and US-1 is that same place where that mini station could be a solution. So when we're talking about fire stations, we're working to prepare for station 22 replacement and construction of station 26 as, as we identify that, you know, how the impact fee is doing and things of that nature. You have already done some of the work. You've engaged with a design. To start preparing that, those tasks. And capital planning is ongoing. You'll see that later on in this budget process as we, as we move further into the things like our capital improvement plan. So how did we do in, in, in our fiscal year so far, 2023? So we have three key performance indicators in the fire department. The first is containing fires to the room of origin. And year to date, we've contained 83% of fires to the room of origin. The national average on this is about 55%. A fire that like a fire in the oven or in the dryer that we're able to get to and keep it to the oven or the dryer, that doesn't count towards our denominator here. It has to move past the container for us to count this. And so that's about what we did last year. And we worked really hard towards maintaining this goal. And crews are really proud of this stat. Obviously, we're really proud of getting pulses back in people that have cardiac arrest. And our goal is 30%. The international average is about 29%. Last year, we met the goal on the number. We've continued to pour time, effort and energy into improving our processes. And we're doing better this year at 36%. We've also identified some tools that we hope can get us into that achieves ROSC, or return of spontaneous circulation. They don't necessarily have Thanksgiving dinner with their family. But a person that doesn't get there, definitely doesn't. So everybody who does have a walk out of the hospital moment starts here. So that's why we think it's a really good way to measure both our fire response and our medical response. So then our next KPI is we want to be able to have trained our people so that when you say it's time for a new fire station, we have the people ready to go. So that means we have three driver engineers that are prepared to become a lieutenant and, and meet our standard, that we have six career firefighters that are ready to become career driver engineers. And then we have identified nine recruits or interns that are ready to become career firefighters. And that's why you see multiples of three, right? We talked about the three shifts. So we've had tremendous success in the lieutenant and driver situation. We could do that tomorrow if you asked. We've, like many businesses, we've started to see a recruitment struggle. So our intern program is essentially exhausted. We're working really hard to try and improve that and make that better. But this year, the United States Fire Administrator identified six issues that are impacting the fire service. One of the chief ones is recruitment and retention. And so the United States Fire Administration has identified an apprenticeship program that they think will really help that. And it's a lot like our intern program. So we felt really good that we may be a step ahead of some of these things. We're trying to make some adjustments to continue to have that program be successful. But essentially, the fire service as a whole has gone from a model like the NFL where they could just hang a sign out that said players wanted, and they'd have a line, a thousand people long. They would come in and, you know, slam their head into another guy's head. And that's just not what's happening. We're going to have to go to a college football model where we try and recruit the very best people for that organization. I believe that's a tremendous opportunity for us. When we had a thousand people, we were trying to create a contest where we were measuring a bunch of stuff that wasn't what we really care about. And so now we can go recruit people, make sure, give a longer timeline for them to, you know, we've had that success. So we're struggling on the recruitment front, but we have some plans. We have some things in the operation right now today. From a retention standpoint, though, we're really successful. In the past seven years, we've lost three firefighters to other fire departments. If you talk to your neighboring agencies, I think you would hear a different story. Occasionally, the fire service becomes not for you. Occasionally, the fire chief retires. Those are, those are good, you know, processes of, of, you know, turning over and succession. But losing other firefighters to fire departments, we view that as not winning. And so we always try to figure out, what did we do? And so then finally, not at one of our KPIs, but it's been a city council goal here since, since we've incorporated it as a city, is that the Palm Coast Fire Department responds in seven minutes or less 85% of the time. So so far in this year, we've responded 72% of the time in under seven minutes. So we've done a lot internally to try and improve our process. We work really hard out the door time. It's something we measure and post all the time. We're coming up with that some distance travel becomes more. And as people move further away from fire stations and we have more call volume that takes one truck out of zone and so another truck's responding across zones, that those, those times are going to change. And we're going to, it's going to be a decision point for us. And that's where we're at today, 72% of the time on emergency calls in the city. So what's our outlook for 2024? Well, we believe that we'll be managing the replacement of fire station 22. That, that'll be part of our process. It'll be something important. It'll be a huge 50-year impact that we can make to our community. That we'll continue to pursue funding options for fire station 26. We believe the demand is there today to do that work. And so that we, we have to figure out how to help fund that. And we know the impact fee continues to grow. In 2024, there are no fire suppression fleet replacements due. There's a couple of our support vehicles that will be replaced. But when you see our fleet allocation, that'll essentially be savings catch-up. And we have a lot of those. And so then we're going to continue to try to solidify our staffing to ensure our level of service. We want to make sure that we're not using firefighters up. Something that you'll hear about in the fire service is something called mandatory callback, which essentially means you come to work at 8:00 AM. And I've heard of firefighters that they come to work at 8:00 AM on Monday. They're supposed to go home at 8:00 AM on Tuesday. And they actually get to go home at 8:00 PM on Wednesday to be back at 8:00 AM on Thursday. That's something that we work really hard not to do. It's occurred, but it's a regular routine occurrence in many departments. And we believe it's the wrong thing. And so we're working really hard to make sure that that's not what we're doing in order to ensure our level of service. So that has been our little where we've been and where we think we're headed. Do you guys have any questions?
No, I just want to thank you and your entire fire department for everything you do. You know, I have nothing but admiration for what you do, chief.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We appreciate that. And our firefighters are super proud of the support that you guys have given us. We're really appreciative of that.
So I, well, obviously and also you for always having a lot of data for us to look at and being prepared for these types of presentations. I do have a lot of questions because we are going into making some pretty tough budget decisions here in the next few months. And I know it's going to involve balancing you all with law enforcement. So what I want to make sure we're doing is looking at, obviously, we never want to look at what's required now, but what do we need for the future? we need for the future? Um, question with regards to, and congratulations on an awesome, um, anniversary this weekend.
Thank you.
A shout out to Patrick Giuliano.
Yeah, he's amazing. San Giuliano is amazing.
Yes, um, you all did awesome. It was great. And one of the things that I really liked seeing was the past, present and future, um, firefighters and contributors to our department that were there. And in that vein, I know we have a lot of junior firefighters. Um, you spoke about the internship program. Is there anything that we as city council or city staff can do, um, to really feed that program? Um, if there's resources, uh, that we can give you, getting into the schools, anything at all, um, that you. That can help in that endeavor. I do think that there's a recruiting issue across the country with regards to fire and police. So if we can, policy-wise or financially help in that endeavor, I would like to see that before us. Or if you know off the top of your head, if there's anything now.
Well, I don't have anything off the top of our head, um, but I got that question written down and we just really believe that, um, part of what we have to do is to, um, recruit younger, right? And so that we, we've developed and that means that some of the people that we develop are not gonna work for us and that's gonna be okay. Um, uh, and that'll be our process. So, um, we're continuing to put time, effort and energy into things like our juniors program and, and, um, supporting the Fire Leadership Academy at Flagler Palm Coast High School, um, that the county runs. Um, but, uh, I'm gonna think really hard about that question, Ms. Ponting here, because it's a great one.
And, uh, with regards to, um, the apparatus that you said we'll need for twenty-six and also staffing, is there any benefit, and maybe you've already done this and I just don't know, but is there any benefit to looking at loans now so that we can prevent, um, rising costs in the future as we are trying to prepare for those stations?
So loans from a, from a, so something that we are working on is, uh, a reset of our fleet purchasing program and treating it more like a capital, like, like when we do, uh, a land asset. And that's something that we're working through that, that I hope to bring to you as a presentation in this fiscal year, um, is something that changes. But it probably would be something because it's a big, it's a, it's a big boat and we don't have any big purchases this year. So that we'd be thinking about for the following fiscal year, I believe. Um, but, uh, I'm not sure that there is, uh, a benefit to taking a loan. Certainly a lease purchase program is something that we have looked at and we just felt like it wasn't, um, it didn't provide the, that it wasn't, that it didn't save, it didn't provide actual savings and it was cost prohibitive. These are the resources that we spend a lot of money on and as we use them up, we don't sell them for, you know, misery. You know, they're not worth the same thing as used, uh, as they are when we, when we purchase them. So, um, we're definitely looking at options for that and, uh, uh, I'm not the expert on all the ways that we could fund some of those things, but I do know some of the tools that we have. You know, we have the impact fee, um, that can fund new things. Um, and so we're looking at both, uh, how our reliability and, uh, efficiency of our fleet work together with what our expectations are for service. Like today, we have two pieces of, uh, fire, like, we have two fire engines that, um, I know for sure that fleet would love for us not to have one of them, but it fits in twenty-two. So when one of those engines is out, we have, I mean, by far the oldest piece of our equipment i- is that. So we're thinking about those kind of things and, um, you know, we're certainly open to direction from council on ways that we can meet the need, you know, what the funding options are. And I'm sure Helena has, um, more of a subject matter expert at some of that than I would be.
Well, I think my concern is, I, you know, obviously we have impact fees to cover new stations and to, I mean, those impact fees have to go very, it's very specific, right? With regards to what we can pay for. But then the upkeep and maintenance of those stations, of the apparatus, any further staffing that we need, that falls back on the current taxpayers and the current homeowners. So I guess what I'm really concerned about is as we add stations and as our apparatus do age and as we probably are gonna have to add staffing. I don't know what kind of calls you have outside of your first due. Right now, I don't want, I don't know what percentage of stations are having to go outside of their first due, but these are expenses that cannot be paid for by impact fees. So just a concern there as to as we grow, how are we going to continue to fund those items, um, knowing that there's only so much development that can come into Palm Coast and continue to provide impact fees. Um, so I guess I would just like to say, and I, and I commend you on having this ten-year plan. Obviously, we wanna be proactive, um, but just making sure that upkeep of these items, especially as parts continue to increase for apparatus, um, that we're really looking at how we're going to continue to fund, not how we just initially fund.
Yes, ma'am. Good copy.
And then the, the last question I had, um, was with regards to, um, just, I guess response times, not, I commend you all on the seventy-two percent. I, and I don't want you to think that I'm at all expecting anything more or coming down on you for that. But are we seeing, um, an increase in response time due to increased traffic? And is there anything that we can do, working with traffic engineer or, um, focusing on our infrastructure to help you all in that regard?
Well, yes, that's part of what, anything that calms traffic, calms fire response. So if you're going slower because there's a lot of cars in front of you, we probably are too. Um, that being said, we do have some processes in place, um, that, that try to do those kind of things. Um, we have an optocom system that controls lights when we respond in an emergency way. It only goes on when we turn on our lights. Um, and it works, uh, it's a GPS guided situation. So it, it can tell if I put the left turn signal on, um, we're approaching a light, it's gonna allow us to turn left. Um, but still the vehicles have to get out of the way. So more of those vehicles create more of that. But every time we do something that's intended, um, to calm traffic, uh, it, it's gonna calm emergency response. Um, and so, uh, you know, if we, if we do something that, that tries to act outside of like an enforcement way, you know, like a, like a, like a curb, we, there was talk of doing some curbing at one point to, to calm traffic in an area. Um, if we do speed bumps, things of that nature, they definitely slow down emergency response. Um, so just know that that's the, when you're in the cost benefit analysis, um, that, that's part of what's going on. And I, you know that I'm working on some data for you on a question that you have regarding speed limits. And I know that's part of our city council priority. So.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and for answering the questions.
Thank you.
I've done, that was a motivational and inspirational, uh, speech. I always feel hyped up, ready to go after you give a, uh, update. I appreciate that all the decisions you guys are making are data-driven and I love to see the visual, uh, implications of our current situation, where we're heading. I think those visuals really are great to show to the public as well, because that can really literally just see where that seven-minute mark is. And nobody will disagree that the sooner you get to a cardiac arrest victim, you know, the higher the chances of survival. So thank you for everything and, uh, another fifty years, all right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Chief, I know you're a baseball fan, so you've had a bunch of softballs in terms of questions. Just one hard ball. The slide that showed the new fire station, it was kind of in a yellowish mustard color, number twenty-six perhaps was the number of it. So you indicated that the number of, uh, calls was kind of in the median of your average calls. I didn't see a decrease in any of the other calls assigned to the other stations in that list. So just for future reference, you explain to me when you can, why you just added on top of the others.
I can explain now if you're okay.
Perfect.
Uh, Station ninety-two responds to the vast, vast majority of those calls occasionally. Like if ninety-two, so Station ninety-two has a tremendous response area, um, but Station sixty-two that's in Benel, so Station ninety-two's at the airport, sixty-two is in Benel. Um, but, uh, if Station sixty-two goes on a medical call, Station ninety-two probably is also responding or us. Who is currently, uh, rescue. It's a cross-staff house. They have some ambulance personnel and some that respond on a tender. Um, so, uh, we do respond, um, to that, uh, as a first due, uh, occasionally when Station ninety-two is out. But the vast majority of those calls are currently by, um, covered by the station that's at the airport along the one hundred corridor. And we just wouldn't design it that way today because, um, although it's important to protect those businesses, um, fire fatalities and fire casualties occur where people sleep.
So I understand. So who's benefiting from the reduced number of calls because they're being assigned to that new station? Is that the county that's benefiting?
Well, I would say that our citizens would give it a huge amount of that benefit because.
From a budgetary standpoint?
Uh, the county staff, um, it depends on how they reassign their personnel. But today, they could do, they could not occupy that station. That's certainly been a conversation, uh, with, uh, previous of them not occupying.
Perhaps an opportunity for future discussion.
So with our aging population, do you all see that these new stations and the locations are going to help with the quality, the amount of time you're spending on scene as well?
So there's a couple of things to unpack there. You know, we're talking about quality and quantity. So we, we can look at quality, because we do so many different types of things, you know, a structured fire call requires a totally different response level, um, than, uh, you know, uh, a lift assist. Um, but we do, we do break down calls by type. Um, and so from a medical standpoint, there's essentially assists that have, um, that, you know, we could just teach two strong folks how to do it. Um, but then there's basic life support calls, which are, um, a much lower level of medical requirement than advanced life support calls. And in advanced life support call, the, the minimum, they're gonna get an EKG and. As well. And so that's probably a third of our medical calls, those advanced life support calls. And we can tell you where some of those things occur. There's, there's certainly some hotspots like assisted living facilities and we actually have those interspersed in our neighborhoods as well. Um, but we also have folks who, you know, as they go through something and as they're going through it, they need us a little bit more for a little while. Um, so there is, there is that quality factor and, um, uh, I do think that our ability to analyze data will tell us a little bit more about a neighborhood that says, hey, this neighborhood is a higher user of our service. You know, maybe we have a, we have some fifty-five and older communities, maybe they are higher users of our service. And that could help us to, um, uh, you know, analyze if there was some kind of out-of-the-box option for something such as like a twelve-hour truck or an eight-hour truck, something that was during, you know, our peak, our peak times. So all of that is, is part of what we consider when we're talking about. We're making recommendations, especially for additional staff.
And I think that's kind of what I'm looking for as far, especially as we evaluate the necessity or the, the value of the mini station. Um, I'm also curious about the data of time on scene, because I do know that that's really important as far as that, that, that does contribute, contribute to how often you are going to have to respond at a first due and your minimum staffing needs. So that information would be important if, if you could get that for me as well.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Chief, thank you. Very thorough presentation. We appreciate it very, very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right, move now to, uh, item number, uh, four under section E, which is a presentation, Mr. Cody, uh, pavement management program update. So please proceed with your presentation.
Sue, good morning. Carl Cody, Director of Stonewater Engineering Department. So today I'm, I'm back here to give, present council an update on the pavement management program. Um, it's, it's, I'll give you an update on the health of the city Palm Coast roadway network. The city has received an updated report for the evaluation of the pavement quality of the roadway system back in two thousand twenty-one. That report indicates that the city roadway network health is on a steep decline. Without significant additional funding, the roadway network is going to deteriorate quickly. So as you know, city council recognizes that roads are the first thing that people see when entering any city and a quality and safe roadway leaves a lasting impression on whether this is the, the city is safe and reliable. So our, our network, our Palm Coast network, you can see based on the number of streets in our system, we have roughly five hundred and forty-two miles of roadways. So we have more lane miles than that. We have about, you can, about twelve hundred lane miles. You can see that a little over eleven hundred. Um, it's an estimated value of eight hundred and fifty million dollars and that was back from the twenty twenty-one report. So obviously those dollars have gone up if you use today's dollars. Uh, the road network is made of arterial and collective. In the city, local roads. So you can see that the local roads are roughly seventy-eight percent of our entire roadway network. So the, the firm that we did hire to come in and assess our roadways was TransMap. So in order to get a scientific evaluation of the roadway network, we hired this company, TransMap, to measure the quality of the city's roadways. You know, they have extensive Florida experience. Um, they have all kinds of background experience. Uh, they've done, worked with over three hundred cities and counties. They're American Public Works, an association, public works partner. They're a registered engineering company. So they've been around a long time and, and been doing this across the, the nation for a, a great number of years. Uh, so this is the vehicle that they actually send to Palm Coast. Well, you can see our original data collection was in the summer of twenty seventeen and then in the fall of twenty twenty-one. And it, it goes around with these devices that can scan the roadways and pick. And cracks. You can see there's four thousand point lasers. It can identify the length, width and depth of the cracks. Um, there's all kinds of data collection instruments. So they, they take this information, it can pick up stuff, um, that even the human eye doesn't necessarily can pick up. It uses some algorithms to evaluate the roadway condition. Um, it can identify based on the, the type of cracking, whether it's the, there's an issue with the pavement, whether there's potential issue with the sub base of the roadway system, where they, where we may have more rapid deterioration. So all that's put into their system that helps them analyze where we should be spending our dollars for resurfacing in, in terms of maintenance. They do generate some maps for us. Um, the final product is a pavement condition index map. This map gives a visual representation of the current quality of the roadway. We use this map and the data behind it to identify individual roadways and clusters of roadways that are in most need of repair. So you can see, you know, red is in. You know, satisfactory greens in okay shape. And dark green is in good shape. So the evaluation report on a pavement condition index scale, abbreviated PCI, that a PCI one hundred is a roadway that has been recently installed or resurfaced. PCI zero is a roadway that's completely failed. For simplicity, you know, you can think of it as a thermometer. You know, it's red at the bottom, green at the top. So. And we show this, the bell curve here in terms of the condition of the roadway and the deterioration factor. So it's not a consistent decline of the roadway. So once the, the roadway gets to a certain deterioration point, it, it deteriorates very quickly because you have water getting through the cracks, getting into the base. You have, uh, heavier vehicles that can cause additional cracking and faster deterioration of the roadway. So once they get past that point, it's a lot more costly to, to repair them because that, some, in, between the two measurements, Palm Coast's average roadway dropped from an average of seventy-nine to a seventy-five, which TransMap indicated was a, a remarkable quality decrease in just four years. That, that's not something they typically see when they come do, doing assessments. And, and that was mainly due to the fact that when they came and did it in seventeen, they said, you really need to fund your program with this much money. We weren't able to meet that required funding they had, you know, indicated. So we, the roads are falling behind already. And it was clearly shown in the, in this study. So we show some pictures here of, you know, the city's current roadway condition. Um, they give examples of, this one here is Matanzas Woods Parkway. It's at a forty-seven PCI. So as, um, another picture of Matanzas, another forty-seven PCI, you can see the edge of the road, you know, ravelling. You can see some areas along the roadway where we, um, have done some patching to help, you know, prepare and, and, you know, get the roadway from falling apart. This here is Royal Palms Parkway, a little bit better, fifty-three PCI, but it's, it's starting to deteriorate quickly. You can see the numerous patches that, you know, our public works staff continue to do on these roadways. Then we get into some residential roadways where we have, uh, forty-six in the sixty-three PCI. We have some, you know, ponding water areas. Um, then K Wood Place, it's a sixty-four. You can see other areas cracking and, and actually vegetative growth in some of the cracks. Another sixty-four PCI in the roadways. So, you know, as a roadway condition declines, we have seen an increase in citizen complaints as well. And that takes, you know, time from city staff to then going out, having to respond to those complaints. More staff time for public works, having to make repairs, takes them away from, takes the resources and time away from performing other maintenance and public works tasks. But as, this will just continue to increase over time as the road values go down. So how do we compare, you know, in Florida? We've been asked that question, um, back in, average in Florida is a seventy-five. In twenty seventeen, we were seventy-nine on average and, and during that last scan, we were at a seventy-five. So when we presented that to council at the time, they, you know, they indicated, yes, a seventy-five is, you know, the, a good average to be at. You know, what is it gonna take just to maintain our roadways in their current condition, knowing that a seventy-five is, is average? knowing that a 75 is, is average? So just to give you some history on, on the program, pavement management program itself, from 2003 to 2012, the county had imposed a half-cent sales surtax, and that revenue went to funding the milling and resurfacing program. So during that 10-year time period that that was in effect, that funding was in place for the city and built and resurfaced roughly 650 lane miles of roadway. So in the 10 years since that funding source expired, because once the revenue went away, there was no more dollars to, to continue the program, the city was only able to mill and resurface about 200 lane miles of roadway. However, we were able to make improvements to a lot of our roadways because we were going through a lot of growth at that time. So we were adding capacity. We got some R.A.R. grants, we got some FDOT grants, so we're able to complete some roadway resurfacing projects and improvements with those roadway projects. So, you know, luckily, we were able to make some improvements by using other source of funds other than maintenance-type funding. So we would be in a lot worse condition today if we weren't, if that didn't occur. So currently, the funding that we use for roadway maintenance is our Streets Improvement Fund. There's the local option fuel tax and the state revenue sharing. The local option fuel tax, you can see these, the two sources can fluctuate, and in one of the revenue sources, there's only a minimal increase year over year. You know, you can see this, this 10-year average where, you know, it can go up and down. It, it's got a slow increase over that 10-year period. So this graph has, you know, quite a few lines on it. It shows the, the money spent for asphalt and milling and resurfacing contracts and associated pavement maintenance since the last roadway PCI scan by TransMap in 2017. So you can see that's what those blue charts are. So that, that shows you the roughly, and those are millions in dollars, you know, in those columns. And then the orange is what we were projecting to spend. So as we were getting behind and as costs increased, with those values went up. And then as we got our new scan done in '24, those costs went up again. So we, we're only spending about 1.81 million average annually on our roadway. And you can see the required funding continues to go up because we were, the program is underfunded. So as we, the program continues being underfunded, the future cost to bring the roadways back up to par is going to continue to increase because of the backlog of the roadways. So in our five-year CIP, the Streets Improvement Fund, you can see it generates about $3 million, and we allocate about 1.7 million to resurfacing. And we're able to fund about an additional 14% dedicated to the streets resurfacing program. However, we deferred certain items to be able to increase the fund allocation to aid in the pavement management program. And you can see those items on the left, the median beautification, entry gateway. Items are currently unfunded as we are trying to shift money to only deal with maintenance critical items on the roadway. And those other items in addition to pavement, such as our traffic signals especially, are going to need more dollars in the future. So they're going to be competing with the resurfacing dollars. And I think the signals are going to win out just due to the structural necessity and need to be operational just to, for operations of traffic and be able to withstand storm events. So the, the allocation of the revenue for resurfacing is only going to go down in the future. So we asked the consultant to do an analysis for us, and a key component of the report that they, TransMap performed is to generate a predictive model of our future PCI. On the left of the graph is our tier roadways, and on the right is the local roadways. The graph line shown in red is the future PCI rating of the Palm Coast roadway network. If the city continues with the current funding for milling and resurfacing of about 2.2 million per year. The average PCI drop we saw from the last four years was four points, a significant drop. The PCI drop we can expect for the next four years, if we just maintain our current revenue and budget, will be a nine-point drop. So we asked TransMap again to, to model the program based on recommended funding and need to maintain the roads at their current condition. So the budget that was indicated on these scenarios identified, you know, the two categories, again, our tieral and local roadways, because our tieral roadways were keeping at a little higher level than our residential roads. It's, it's, the residential roads are lower speed, less traffic. You still have a lot of heavy vehicles because we have a lot of the infill traffic, infill lots for construction vehicles. They, they do take a beating, you know, even from trash trucks and whatnot. So you can see the overall funding need is roughly 12.2 million dollars to maintain the, the current level of road condition. So this identifies the overall funding gap. The city roadway network is at an inflection point. You know, asphalt milling and resurfacing program needs a dedicated funding source. You know, city council needs to take action and assign a funding source. The drop in average roadway pavement condition index we saw from the last four years was four points. The next drop, if we do not find some additional funding, will be nine points, which would be very dramatic. This budget need today is at a critical point. If we push this funding down the road, the roadway deterioration accelerates, and a milling and resurfacing project today will become potentially a full-depth repair down the road. So we, we also, I had TransMap do an analysis in terms of, you know, what, what are these impacts going to be if we are unable to find additional revenue for this program? And so the accumulated roadway damage repair, you know, will go up, you know, if we maintain the 2.2 million, the costs are going to escalate because of normal resurfacing and because we, we may now be required to do some entire roadway restoration and base work. So after five years of budget levels, the, the backlog of work will be roughly $52 million just to get back to current conditions in five years from now. So spending money on maintenance now is a good investment to avoid even more expensive repairs in the future. So I, I know, you know, part of what we did and what we presented to previous councils was, you know, where additional funding come from to supplement the funding that is no longer available for resurfacing. And there are a couple of ways that can be identified. City staff identified three that the city have control over to impose and generate some revenue would be the electric franchise fee, the public service utility tax, and/or a percentage of the ad valorem property tax, or a combination of one or more of these together. So there's some, there's some criteria identified in what you can tax or what you can charge a fee on and what, what percentages you can have on here. Finance will be, including these as part of that overall alternate revenue source presentation that'll be coming to you in May, but these were ones that were identified that you could dedicate specifically for resurfacing here.
So Carl, thank you. I know the chief is in the back of the room and can respond to me at the dais within seven minutes if my heart starts to palpitate after I try to digest these numbers, but seriously, the history, I think you, you, you started off going back to 2017. So the issue that you are describing today has been boiling in the pot for a long time now. These roadways didn't start to fail just in this past year or two. This has been a process for a long time. So I guess I would ask you to go back in, in history a little bit and, if I could, help me understand how prior city councils have understood the priority of road repaving, road resurfacing, being it as one of the top three quality of life and public safety features, along with public safety, road resurfacing, and quality of life. Can you help me understand?
Absolutely.
How, how you all have moved this forward?
For sure. So in 2016, when, you know, my first term started, the way I understand it, I'm going to need some help with the recollection, but essentially, even councils prior to that, during the economic downturns, when you have great-looking roads, it's very easy to not maintain the street repaving program. It's easy to kick the can down the proverbial road, if you will. In 2016, I, we had an underfunded repaving program. And at that time, we were still going out and we were doing drive-bys for assessing the road situations. So then we took the strategic plan of being able to use LiDAR, which has been much more strategic, and that kind of opened our eyes to how bad the roads really were. So all of a sudden, you now have a flashpoint of, okay, so we didn't have a set of criteria that actually specifically identified where we were in the road. But then we made decisions along the way that are same type of decisions that we are, we have hard decisions to make here, like do we fund a, you know, ongoing projects of, like, how much money could have, the public works funds that we, we divert for the upcoming public work projects, was any of that available to be funded for the street repaving program, if I remember right? We were making decisions basically to fund these upcoming projects. It's a matter of competing. Where we've gotten here, we make, you know, decisions all the time sitting up here that are hard decisions to make, and this is an inequality that's going to continue to grow. And I think that just the, the basic outline of Palm Coast was so hard to initially maintain because we had all these roads. The upkeep of these roads wasn't necessarily backed by the lack of homes at the time. You know, we've had this huge influx of population in the relatively recent period. I think it's just been an accumulating set of factors that have led us to the place where we are today. I think this council and previous councils, I would like to know the appetite that you have for these alternative funding sources. Previously, we haven't, we haven't, or those haven't had a way to tap these.
So I appreciate that. Carl, could you bring back the slide on the alternative revenue sources for, for these projects? I don't remember these really being a, a priority discussion, as you, as you said, Councilman, in the past. And I just want to make one other note. The city of Palm Coast, are we unusual in terms of our, our tieral versus our neighborhood roadways in terms? What I'm getting to is, I don't think we have the benefit of certain fundings because so many of our roadway miles are interior roadways. Is that correct?
Not necessarily.
Yeah, to other, other, you had a, a chart up there which showed a bunch of other cities, if I remember correctly.
Yeah. One thing that was noted by TransMap firm was we have extremely high number of roads to maintain. So if you look at this chart, we have the highest number of lane miles out of all these other entities to maintain. So we're, you know, it, it's just we have a, a big system.
Yeah, I'm not sure everybody's aware of that. I mean, is that surprising to city council that, I mean, look at that number, that, that stands out like a, well, I hate to.
Not to me, but it is. Think about all those roads while they were also, they were built and there weren't any houses on them. I'm sure those of us who have been long here, have been here long enough, remember all those empty cul-de-sacs that, you know, we used to hang out in. But this is a byproduct of that. I mean, that's a, that's a big number.
And, you know, and just to tap into that, with a lot of our roads being residential, we, we do not have many state roads. We are also qualified for DOT, like small county funding, eligibility to resurface roadways. So basically, additional or other funding sources through DOT or other agencies really eligible for. So that, that's another downside to what we have is a lot of our roadways, we are responsible to maintain, and there's really no funding out there for them. So, and going back in time too, you know, one thing that's hard for a lot of people to grasp is, you know, in 2017, you know, we sent the warning message out that, yes, our roads are getting bad, but you're driving the roads and they feel pretty good. You're like, oh, well, the roads are pretty good. But you can see in four years, they dropped four points, and we're going to drop another nine points in four years, and then we're $50 million trying to catch back up. So it, it's hard for people to visualize and forecast, if we don't do something now, we're going to have a big problem in five years. So that's, that's what we're really trying to make a statement on today.
And the one other point which I didn't see in, in the alternative revenue sourcing or funding for, for these projects, is that it is my understanding that future development, I don't know if Mr. DiLorenzo needs to weigh in on this, future development will require the developing entity to put their infrastructure and maintain their road surfaces themselves as opposed to putting it on the backs of taxpayers within the city. So what we're discussing here is the maintenance of all the traditional or the existing roadways within the city of Palm Coast. Am I, am I correct, or can you correct me on?
Yes, I think, sir, I believe what you're referring to is that we, for approximately three years, we no longer. Because we have a different development pattern. We have development patterns with CDDs and HOA, so they're responsible for maintaining their own.
So to, getting ready to pay for a quality, over the last 22 years, certainly back at least 15, your, your graphic analysis. So in terms of alternative, I mean, this is a huge number that we're looking at, but it's not something that I would recommend this council be able to kick a can down the road again. Because if you notice the failure rate, it's like what cost you a dollar this year is going to cost you five bucks in the coming years. So it's a multiple of five, and I'm sure that only gets worse with time.
Carl, just a couple of quick questions here. There's a lot more options out there for roads, correct, material-wise?
We, we've explored those. In 2017, you know, they, TransMap identified a lot of global treatments, which can be seal coating, you can, there's lots of them, probably a dozen or more out there. Some local people have done them, Benel, Flagler Beach have done some, Warman Beach have done some, Jacksonville have done some. We've gone out, watched them be performed. Those costs have also risen considerably, so we've done some cost-benefit analysis on those. They haven't been, a lot of them haven't been around long enough to get that true cost-benefit analysis, but based on the current information that we've collected from those other agencies, it, it's, it becomes a wash. So you, you can do something on the roadway with one of those types of treatments, and yeah, it may, it may get you a three-year delay, but in, you know, so it extends the life three years. So say you need to resurface it in 15 years, well, now you've got to resurface it in 18, but in the middle, you're spending some dollars. So those three years you're getting is, is a wash in the long run. So we didn't see that benefit yet. We're still waiting for it to be around longer, so we have. And one of them that is more unique to us is, it can be useful in some of those, especially in residential roadways, but because we have so many vacant lots and we have all the heavy, they don't like heavy trucks. So with all our vacant lots, it would not work well because it would not last as long as they want it to last or predict it to last. So if we had a fully-built-out neighborhood with very few lots, we, we are considering going out and trying it on some of those roads so we can do our own analysis rather than use someone else's. So I'm not saying we're not going to do any, but based on what we're going to do now, we, we may look at trying those out in specific small locations that are fully built.
I want to make sure, you know, that it's not a wash. I mean, it has to be, you know, economic, make economic sense to us. We were talking earlier about traffic calming. I know it's not a, wants to hear because it affects response. Do lower speed limits reduce the wear on a, does it matter? Is it significant or is it insignificant?
The speed on the roadways don't matter the most. It's, a lot of it has to do with stop, the stop, the movement, stopping and going has the biggest impact on the condition of the roadway. Well, that and the environment. So if you have a high water table, if you have cracks in the roadway for water to get in, the sun, there, there's lots of other varying factors, but the stopping and moving of vehicles is a big one.
Okay, I didn't know that. That's why I asked. You know, I'm looking at these funding options, and this is not the time in our economy for us to be putting fees on electrical bills or utilities, but we do need, we do need to step forward and take some more action on this. So I think part of what we need to look at. So I think part of what we need to look at are our must haves and our wants. Roads are a must have, just like police and fire, water. But there's things that are not must haves. And I think we're going to have to make some difficult, you know, hard choices this year because we have to come up with the money that you need to keep our roads good. I don't think we have a choice, but we're going to have to make some hard decisions as we go through this budget process. That's all I have.
Counselor?
So I definitely second you. I, Vice Mayor, I think that we're going to have to maybe think about putting some bells and whistles on the back burner for a little while while we address the stormwater, wastewater and road resurfacing because those seem to be the big ticket items. With regards to these funding options, I will tell you the way that I've kind of tried to approach all of the budget issues that we have is treating the city like a business. And in any business, you need to diversify the monies that you're bringing in. It seems to me that the kind of buckets we're looking at, the ad valorem service utility and the franchise fee option. If we're able to impose a franchise fee or a public service, I'm sorry, the utility tax that could help with the ad valorem monies that we're having to charge our homeowners. Is that accurate? So if we bring in monies from other sources, we have the option of not, of perhaps being able to help with the ad valorem.
It, it's, it's not a true offset because your, your, these franchise fees and yearly tax are going to have a much smaller year-to-year increase and your property tax is going to have a larger year-to-year increase. So in the long run, you can't, one doesn't offset the other, one for one. So it's, it's not a complete, maybe finance can explain it better than I can.
No, I think you're doing good. I would just add, add, as you diversify your revenues, you are mitigating which increases for sure.
Okay, thank you. So dedicated, dedicated millage here underneath this third box. Do you mean that the amount of mon, not that we're, that we're thinking about raising the millage rate, but that we're thinking about taking what we're currently bringing in and dedicating more of that to our street resurfacing program?
Well, right now, there's no ad valorem tax dedicated to millage. There was at one time. I, I don't remember the time period or how much, but there's even dedicated millage to our capital project program at one time too, like .25. And during the downturn, you know, I think they, they took that away. But you would have to dedicate millage, whether it's new millage. You know, obviously, if you're trying to use existing millage, you know, you're taking it away from some other program or level of service. So it's not, it's not like there's money sitting out there, so.
It's also the, it's the backstop that prevents that can from rolling forward down the road any further so that you, you have no choice once you enact it, but to keep up with your, with your program.
Do we need to reenact something like the CIP quarter percent policy that was once in place that was removed during the economic downturns to be able to fund this type of, you know, is like, that's something that we want to talk about? So essentially, prior, was there a .25, a quarter of a percent premium on all of our capital improvement projects that was set aside to resurface our roads?
Yeah, that, that was set aside to build our, our capital project program. It was helped to supplement, you know, our parks and facilities at the time. But that, that, that's one of the options here that we identified. Millage could definitely play a role in providing some or all the funding for, for this program. Obviously, you know, you guys mentioned diversifying, you know, revenues, you know, the utility tax, you talked about EV, you know, people that charge EVs at home, how you assessing, you know, not paying a gas tax. So how are you assessing those folks from using the roadways? You know, the electric tax or franchise fees, one way to.
But I mean, also, electric cars don't need fuel and the fuel tankers use those roads at 80,000 pounds. So let's just call it what it is.
So, yeah, yes.
So to the, to the city manager, I mean, this is, this is a hefty conversation. I mean, what I'm hearing from city council is we're really looking to staff to help us find or supplement this particular slide that's up now on other potential revenue sources, whether we have to, you know, get back in the car to Tallahassee and find out if there's some resiliency or some sustainability monies that are earmarked. Now, I don't know if they would apply to our neighborhood roadways, but I, I think that we, that number is so big that we can't leave any stone unturned and we have to make sure that we have looked at every possible opportunity there. And I don't think city council has the expertise to do that. So we're going to lean on staff to help us come up with that menu of possibilities if we can, on, on how to, you know, help us through this.
Yeah, understandable. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor. Very understandable. And we actively collaborate with Flagler County. Carl mentioned a little bit about the qualification of some of our roadways, but when we can work together and look at opportunities to partner, we do that. And also, Carl, when we have those CIP projects funded by DOT, we try to stretch that dollar longer and make those improvements in addition to what we're talking about today for resurfacing, looking at turn lanes, safety improvements, things like that. So we do collaborate very well on the local level and working through our District Five Secretary, Mr. Tyler, understanding what other opportunities we have. That's definitely something we're very active in. What I would say is, you know, Elena's coming back on May 23 to revisit these funding sources and looking back to the city council for that direction. I would say our staff would come prepared to say, if you chose to do this direction, this would be the relief put on this program. I think we can do that for city council to help the, the decision-making.
I think that'd be very helpful. We appreciate that very much. Good.
Carl, would you say that we have a crisis here?
Well, you saw those pictures in Matanzas. That's why I kind of wanted to show you where we're at with our roadways. We, we do have a resurfacing contract coming to you to, to address Matanzas, but Royal Palms, we weren't able to fund, you know, because just based on available funds, we were going after the worst roadways because Matanzas is basically falling apart. That, that's going to require a half a mile of rebuilding. And, and so we're going to be at the point here, we're going to have more and more roadways that look like Matanzas or Royal Palms in the future because if we don't, you know, start getting ahead of it.
I, I can help you with that answer. So being an engineer, the definition of a logarithmic curve is a crisis every, every way. And that's, that's just the nature of the beast.
Are we in a situation where we may need to dip into our reserves?
Well, this is a long-term need because the roads are going to need continuous resurfacing, continuous, it's not a one-time fix. So.
If I may, I think that what we really need to do is make sure that we're bringing in revenues that are going to be consistent, being that we have to consistently repair roads. So that's why we don't use loans to do things like this long-term because this is going to be a long-term requirement that's going to require a long-term funding source. So what I would like to see, Elena, specifically from your presentation, is when we're looking at these different options for revenues, if we could see the breakdown of, well, you know, I agree with you, Vice Mayor, I don't think we need to put the squeeze on our homeowners anymore. What would we be able to take from just commercial and industrial? If we took residential out of it and we only impose certain fees on resident, or rather, commercial and industrial? I will just mention this. I think that it's important that we look at taxing usage of things rather than just having a roof over your head, right? So we, we take an ad valorem tax and it can go up and down based on market conditions. People can't control that, but they can control their usage. So anything that we are taking in a fee or a tax on based on what people are using, to me, makes more sense versus just by virtue of the fact that you live in your house, you have to pay taxes. Obviously, they're there, but we can try to lessen that burden. So if we can really see a bevy of options from you when we come back, because these are really important decisions. And I also would urge maybe city manager or city staff to look at working with the county on that half-cent sales tax. Because this, that half-cent sales tax could, could be, A, it's going to come from people passing through our community and spending, and not just from our residents. B, but I know the county could also benefit. They need roads that are fixed, you know, need repaired as well. So if we can try to get that half-cent sales tax for road improvement, working in conjunction with the county, I think that's a conversation that needs to be had seriously with our, with our county folks.
Well, the last time we looked at that, the county didn't have the nerve to go forward. They tried to dump it on us and I don't want to see us.
No, so I think, I think the points are, are well made. So with our collaborative spirit now, that, that half cent perhaps could be part of a program over some period of time. I'm not prepared to say whether it needs, could, could be in this cycle or the next cycle. But if it became a part of a program and we were better able to set the residents' expectations properly, we're going to be doing this in the future because of this and, and give the rationale and the reason after we've exhausted the menu of other opportunities that we could use to pay for it. All that comes into play. And to your point about the fund balances as well, well, we, obviously, we try to protect those always at all costs because we don't know what's coming in the future. However, of course, as a part of this normal SAP program, we'll review those fund balances. I think that's in a future presentation that you'll be delivering as well.
Maybe our reserve is a bit too high.
Well, I, I can't, I can't answer that. I mean, it's something that we would, through the normal course of strategic action planning, review them and see what the safeguards are and take a look at that. But I think there are many different pieces here that will need to come together for a program that would encompass a couple of years going forward. I think that would be the right way to plan it. It's not all going to happen in this one budget cycle. That's just unrealistic and not practical. And we do want to keep in mind, and I think as you both said, you know, keep this as much off the backs of our taxpayers as we possibly can. So a long-term program to remedy the situation for the long term.
I have a question. So if we take Matanzas Woods, for example, how much of the expedited degradation of Matanzas Woods is due to the amount of construction that's occurring over there? Like the heavy trucks that are driving on these roads? Do, do we have any idea of, you know, basically, I'm asking, the type of traffic that's on these roads? Is it accelerating, no pun intended, the degradation of the roads?
I, I don't think I could assess that. You know, I couldn't put a factor on that in particular. We do know we, that it's, it's failed quickly. It has lots of failures. We actually hired a geotechnical firm to go out there and do some borings and look what's underneath. And that roadway system is, is poorly constructed. It does not have good soil base underneath, subgrade underneath the pavement. So that, that generated a quick failure there. Yes, larger vehicles have more of an impact than small vehicles on a roadway. That, that's a true statement. How much more? And, you know, I couldn't tell you.
But Councilman, to your point, so when a developing entity builds a residential development, for example.
Yeah.
The last thing they do is pave the roads permanently. And the reason is because of the destruction during construction of the, the roadways and all of that. So I think your point is well taken.
Absolutely.
So I, I think long-term, the, the question's going to come back again each budget cycle. As we build out these last 10,000 less lots, the heavy construction, the heavy weight on the roadways should begin to diminish over time, I would think.
Well, that's where I was heading, was whether or not we're strategic in the, in the point of looking where this future development is going to occur. And then also trying to assess the underlying, I'm curious as to whether or not our roads are degrading at the rate for which they should, like the standard. Because like we're talking about, if it's a, if there's underlying issues potentially, that would go into the equation of how rapidly our road systems are going to degrade. So I think these are all things that we need to take into account, where the, you know, accelerated degradation is going to occur, but also the underlying assets underneath it, whether or not they're rate of degradation. Because I'm curious about that. Are our roads deteriorating more quickly than other cities?
Well, to your point, Councilman Cluvus, I also think that as we're looking to increase our commercial, the percentage of commercial building versus residential, you're going to have, just like it's, it's less of a use of fire and police, there's going to be less traffic as well that it's created by commercial parks rather than residential development. So I think our overall plan and what we want to do for the future of Palm Coast is going to help in this regard. So your point's well taken there. We don't want a knee-jerk reaction, right? But need to address what we're, what we're looking at.
So I would encourage each city council member, as we have our follow-up one-on-ones, to, to explore this particular topic in great detail and get your questions asked so that when we come back together again, we can start to fit together a program, which would make sense. So I appreciate everybody's input. Carl, thank you both for your presentation today. Very well done.
That's a tough one, Carl. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, with that, we'll move to the closing section of public participation in today's meeting. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on items not previously discussed in today's agenda? Please come forward.
Good morning again, Mayor Gene Dowd, Palm Coast. A couple of weeks ago, you said, you pointed out that some things make it into news right away. And sure enough, front page, stormwater rates and listing all the options. And I remember the Vice Mayor saying, fire, police, roads are a priority, need to be maintained, funded. One council member, God forbid, government is being proactive rather than reactive. Since 2012, that tax was eliminated to maintain the roads. If we don't maintain the stormwater and there's a bad storm, the next city council will be the ones holding the bag. So, and I'm sorry to take up your time, but I was once asked where I lived, why do I vote for the school board or school budget? And I said, because my stepson went through all the schools in that county that I lived in. He's not in the schools anymore, but it's my obligation to vote for the school budget. And you gentlemen and ladies, I respect you all. You've been elected by the majority of the voters in your elections. Some decisions are very tough. And I thank again the Vice Mayor for asking for more budget meetings so the public can be more knowledgeable. But at the end of the day, you five will make the ultimate decision on the budget. And from Carl Cody in the last two weeks, that's going to be a real tough budget. And I wish you the best and I support you all. Thank you.
Any additional members of the public want to come forward? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment. And at this time, I will ask city council members, any additional items you'd like to bring up today before we conclude?
I have none.
I just want to make a quick comment specifically in response to Mr. Dowd's comment. And I appreciate you and your support continuously of our first responders, our military members and us up here on the dais. I, I do think it's important that we recognize that what we are doing right now and the decisions that we make are potentially helping our future generations here in Palm Coast because what we don't decide to pay for now is going to be on the backs of our kids. So, you know, we need to be smart with our budget. We need to be smart with our monies. We need to really be mindful of all of the expenses that our residents are incurring from all direction, but at the same time, really prioritize what's important so that we are not having tougher decisions or forcing other people in our shoes to have tougher decisions 2020.
Thank you. Councilman?
I completely concur. We also had the opportunity, the privilege to speak at our City Citizens Academy yesterday and that was always a pleasure. Thank you to the staff, making that always awesome. But yeah, thank you for the great meetings today and thank you for all the budgetary explanations. And I know that these weren't the easiest questions. It's kind of a higher tone conversation, so thank you.
And my final comment is simply, I really want, appreciate city council members' collaborative discussion to help us get through this difficult process. So we'll keep this going and we'll, we'll, we'll make those hard decisions together. I appreciate each one of you and obviously to staff as well for all the hard work that made our discussion possible today. And then I would ask city manager, any final comments for today?
Yes, Mayor, I actually would like to take a page from Chief Barry Hill's script today of retention and also recruitment of future talent. And this is really a product. Vacancies across the city. And last Friday, and last Friday, our amazing HR department, along with many other departments, hosted a job fair at the community center. And we had almost 100 attendees come through that job fair. And actually, nine, we believe, applied through our website. And we collected 20 resumes and actually conducted some interviews onsite. And it really speaks to our commitment to making sure we're out there in the community, coming to them with job opportunities. But again, starting off the conversation, it's really about our success because in the first quarter of this fiscal year, we promoted 24 employees and we also had eight employees auto-promote. So that succession ladder is working, but we know that we still have to be out there actively to recruit the talent and then have that interface with our community. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. So with that, I would like to adjourn. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all.